At school board meetings, I'd like to congratulate and thank you for setting an example of respect for differing opinions and of working cooperatively in presenting a united front for the good of WJCC schools. I would like to suggest that you return to allowing two to three minutes for each speaker, but...
Congratulations. Thank you for setting that.
I'm sorry, that's my phone.
We're pausing your time.
Thank you.
Nobody else is here.
Hummers are so cute when they use technology.
All right.
Thank you. I would like to suggest that you return to allowing two to three minutes for each speaker, but only have speakers at your regular meetings. I make this suggestion for two reasons. One is that it is difficult to express a complete idea in 90 seconds, and the other is that it is difficult for many people to attend a 4:30 meeting. I also think that a work session should be just that, a work session, and allow you to get as much as possible done. The other problem with speaking at a work session is that it makes it harder for speakers to follow the whole meeting, since we're not allowed in the meeting room, except for when we speak. Also, as we move back to school, I'm most concerned about how we will remedy pandemic learning loss and also in how ventilation has been improved in our school buildings. I know you have your work cut out for you. I know you'll continue to do your best, hopefully with the support of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burge.
And that concludes our speakers.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. All right. And thank you to our speakers who did make the effort to come out today. We appreciate your comments. Item 6.1, review authorization to permit city-county use of school buses. Dr. Herron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes will present this item this evening. This is something we bring to the board every single year to ask permission for use of buses, Mr. Snipes. You've just about got settled there.
Good evening, School Board Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Herron. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal six of the strategic plan, and as Dr. Herron says, this is Ops' annual request for the school board to authorize and to permit the city and county the use of school buses. The Code of Virginia requires school divisions make such approval for such use. The school board of any school division may enter agreements with governing bodies of any county, city, or town in the school division, any state agency or any agency established or identified per United States Public Law 8973. It will allow, it does allow and include transportation for the elderly. The costs associated with the use of school buses by the city and county are paid by the appropriate governing body and do not accrue to the school division. The superintendent recommends the board review the authorization to permit use of school buses and be prepared to vote at the August 16, 2022 meeting.
Mr. Snipes, any questions on this item for Mr. Snipes? How often are buses used by city or county?
I would have to get that to you. I couldn't answer that.
I was just curious.
Yeah, I could get that in. Off the top of my head, I can't think of many times they were used.
That was just a curiosity.
They're not used. The last time I can remember, and maybe some people in here can remember, is for a celebration that we did for Jamestown, 1706.
Commemoration.
Yeah, Jamestown commemoration when we used it for that, which was a while ago.
I don't need the information, it was just a curiosity.
We used a lot of them, yeah.
Great. Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Snipes. Move on to 6.2, review fiscal year 2024 budget calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Yu will present the budget calendar. We bring it to the board for your consideration at this time of the year. She's going to provide those details now. Thank you, Ms. Yu.
Thank you, Dr. Herron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For your consideration this evening is the proposed budget calendar for fiscal year 2024. The timeline stays the same from year to year, with the CIP budget process beginning in October and ending in December. Then the operating budget process starts in January and ending in May. Some of the key dates in the process are as follows. Presentation of the CIP committee recommendations on October 4th. Presentation of the superintendent's proposed CIP on November 1st. A joint meeting with the James City County Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council regarding the CIP on December 2nd, and school board adoption of the capital improvement plan on December 6th. Then in January, we'll move into the development of the operating budget. We are again proposing budget workshops prior to the regular January board meetings. The first meeting is proposed to be held on Thursday, January 5th, which is a change from the board's typical meeting schedule. This would allow some extra time for preparation after returning from winter break on Tuesday, January 3rd. February 21st will be the initial presentation of the superintendent's proposed operating budget. A joint meeting with the James City County Board of Supervisors and Williamsburg City Council is proposed in March, with the date to be determined. Then March 21st would be the school board's approval of the operating budget and order to forward to our funding partners by April 1st. And May 16th would be the projected date of adoption of the operating budget after receiving funding information back from James City County and the city of Williamsburg. The proposed calendar with dates is attached to the agenda item for your review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Cook, I see you leaning in.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say I really appreciate the tentative meetings in March and May. It's rare that they're needed, but I think it's important to put that out there in case the board needs extra time to deliberate, because sometimes, particularly if it's a really tough budget year, that extra time is necessary. So I just appreciate your keeping that in there very much.
And on the January 5th school board budget work session, I think we heard from just about every board member that there aren't, it's not going to be a calendar conflict there. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. I was just curious. Good. Any other questions or comments around the calendar as we see it? Cool. Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 6.3, review the 2223 CNS food and consumables purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Mr. Snipes is back at his seat again to introduce this item.
Yes. Good evening again, and I'm joined tonight by Jane Haley, who is the supervisor of Child Nutrition Services for additional questions if you have them. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal six of the strategic plan, and which is brought to you for your review and subsequent approval, is the 2022-2023 CNS foods and consumable purchases. Annually, we bring this to you because foods and consumables, we receive foods and consumables from a variety of vendors through cooperative agreements. Those agreements enable the CNS departments to increase their purchasing through economies of scale and bulk buying of items such as paper, milk, cleaning supplies, and beverages. Since these items are commodities, they may be affected by market forces, and therefore you will see fluctuations in the increase and decrease of the cost of the products. Some of the tonight vendors that we're asking for you to review are Flowers, which provides our bread, and we are asking for you to approve them on a four-year contract. JL Culpepper, which provides some of our food, and Ms. Haley will can go into those type of foods if you ask, and that is another four-year contract. And Riverside, which provides our paper projects, products, and that is also a remaining four years on that contract. The superintendent recommends that you review the vendor's purchase order amounts and be prepared to vote at the August 16, 2022 meeting.
Any questions? Ms. Young, and then Ms. Ortega.
All right. I mean, we, Mr. Snipes, how are you tonight?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good. So on this, this is a, we've, this is the second year of getting on this contract, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. I think my question relates to the supply chain. How have costs increased?
I could hardly hear you at the end.
How have costs increased? Do we have any kind of percentage?
Ms. Haley may be able to answer that question for you.
Costs have gone up significantly. We were just looking at some of those this afternoon. Some of our items have gone up 10%. I have two particular chicken patties that, believe it or not, have gone up 125%. We will probably try to find alternatives for those two items. There's a wide range, anywhere from 10, 15, 35%. It just varies on the item, depends on what the item is, or depends on what the item is, but they have gone up significantly.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
So my question is just from my own really understanding. If we have, we have a five-year contract that was at a set amount, and now these prices have changed, is that, or do we reapprove a five-year contract every year?
The bids are issued, and they are done for one year with the potential to renew for four additional years, but there is a clause in there where they can renew them with an increase each year. And there's also a clause that allows them, if they can show that the market has risen and they have the backup documentation from each manufacturer, to be able to show you that documentation, which of course they all do because of the supply chain issues right now. Once they can show that, then they are allowed to increase the pricing.
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a question, and I'm sure we do this. We are recycling the paper products, right? We do.
To the best that we can, yes.
Okay, awesome.
Ms. Cook? No? Okay. Sorry. All right. I don't, you've answered my question that Ms. Ortega had asked. If there are nothing else, all right, okay. I think we're good. Thank you very much. All right. Item 6.4, review the 2223 meal price increase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes is going to take us through this item as well. Annually, we've got to consider the price of school meals using a formula to do so, Mr. Snipes.
Yes. Tonight's proposed agenda item supports goal three of the strategic plan, and again for your review and subsequent approval, is the, is the review of the 2022-2023 meal price increase. Section 776 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act, Congress stipulates that only school food authorities that had a negative balance in their nonprofit school food service account as of December 31, 2021, are required to establish prices for paid lunches using the paid lunch equity tool, which is known as the PLE tool, and under guidance of the school nutrition, excuse me, school lunch program. However, all school food authorities must complete the PLE tool, and we have done such. By doing so, the PLE calculations for the school year 2023 requires any school food association that charged less than the targeted weighted average of $3.09 for paid lunches in 2019-2020 must adjust their weighted average lunch price. In school year 2122, the WJCC weighted average lunch price was $2.82, which was less than the $3.09 of paid lunch price in 20, weighted paid lunch price of 2019-2020, and therefore we must increase our lunch prices according to the requirement. And again, in order to accommodate rising food prices, as Mrs. Haley just explained, an increase in shipment fees and labor increases, the recommendation is made to increase the lunch price by 35 cents at the elementary and middle schools and 40 cents at the high schools. The 2022-2023 lunch prices are $3.10 for elementary, $3.20 for middle, and the range between $3.40 and $4.15 for high school. And Ms. Haley can explain to you why the difference is in those prices. Breakfast prices for all levels will increase by 25%, and therefore the 2022-2023 breakfast prices will be $1.65 for elementary school, $1.75 for middle school, and $1.85 for high school. Breakfast and lunch prices have not increased since 2019-2020 school year. The superintendent recommends that you review the proposed information and be prepared to vote at the August 16, 2022 meeting.
All right. Open it up to...
As a side note to that, I'd like to add that we do have four schools this year that all students will be eating free. Five, excuse me.
Which schools are those?
There are James River, Matthew Waley, Berkeley, Laurel Lane, and Norwich. Am I correct?
James Blair.
James Blair, excuse me, instead of Berkeley.
Okay. Thank you for that. Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I'll follow up on the community eligibility. Is that what it's called? Yeah. The five schools, is that breakfast and lunch?
Yes.
So every child will be eligible to get a free breakfast and a free lunch at those five schools? And that's because of the free and reduced lunch population at each of those schools?
There is a very detailed formula that I won't go into because it gets a little complicated, but basically it has to do not with the reduced percentage, but with the number of free students eligible based on foster, homeless, and TANF, and SNAP.
Okay. So you work closely with the social service departments then, and the attendance zones and crosswalk that?
Yes, and the Department of Education.
Yeah, good. That's, so the parent isn't having to fill out any forms?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the other 11 schools plus Bright Beginnings, I guess that it'll all be, they still have to go back to the old way of applying for free and reduced lunch? Is that correct?
For some of them, now they still will be eligible, a certain number of them, through the direct certification that we will still get from the State Department and Social Services.
Okay. Thank you.
Direct certification is again the ones that are eligible for SNAP and TANF that comes directly to us from the Social Services Department.
And so there's no high school that is eligible for community eligibility?
No.
Okay. But the community eligibility calculation, I presume, is a little bit more accurate than relying on families to fill it out, because sometimes there's a lower take-up rate. Is that fair?
I won't say that it's more accurate, but it's based on a formula that is generated by the federal government that we use.
It must be very accurate then. So I, so I just wanted, before I ask my next couple of questions, I want to just thank you for your hard work. I know with labor shortages and increased costs and regulatory changes that seem to be etched in jello, you have done yeoman's work making sure that kids get fed under some pretty complex and difficult situations over the last several years. So thank you, that, you know, that's remarkable, and I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to ask you... So, I just wanted to ask you a kind of, just a question, your opinion about community eligibility, since you saw that essentially at a division-wide level since we reopened schools, where everybody gets a free lunch, and now, we're going to go back to the old way, and you, of course, are deeply familiar with the way it was prior to the pandemic. Can you just give, just what's your thoughts about everybody being eligible for breakfast and lunch versus everybody having to get in line and pay? I mean, what, do you have any thoughts about?
I think it had a great benefit, and I think we're going to see it, it's going to be a great benefit to those five schools that have it. My hope is that eventually, the federal government will see their due diligence to be able to put it everywhere. I know that there is something that was proposed before Congress just in the last two weeks to change the, or lower the ratio for the community eligibility. From right now, it's at forty percent in that lovely formula that they have, to lower it to twenty-five, which would then make more schools eligible, and we would have had, I can't remember exactly, but we would have had quite a few more schools that could have been eligible. And if that passes, that would be something that would be great for the future, which would help until they decide to put everybody on the program.
So, does that help or harm your budget? And, you know, that community eligibility piece? I mean, are you able to recoup your funds?
It helps in one way, but with the labor issues, it harms because we are having a labor issue, and you need more people to be able to serve all the additional meals. So, that is an issue in that regard.
And did you see children taking advantage of the free breakfasts and lunch at greater numbers? Or did you see people still bringing their own or still buying à la carte? I mean, what, what were you seeing?
In the elementary, in the middle, they take advantage of it to a good degree. In the high schools, they did at the beginning, and then it kind of slacked off a little bit.
Okay.
Ms. Cook, if I can break in, I think we've got two other board members that have questions as well.
Okay. If you could come back to me, I just have some, I have some more questions.
A long list?
No. I just wanted to understand community eligibility and its impact on our children. And then I also wanted to talk about, well, it's, it's okay. You can go ahead.
Ms. Ortega, and then Ms. Young, and we can come back to Ms. Cook.
Some of my questions were along the same lines. So, I maybe just answered this sort of, but I wanted to get a sense of how many, what was the percentage of, when everything was free and reduced? Do you have a sense of what the percentage was of kids who did not utilize that?
I don't think I quite understand what you're asking me.
So, but over the last few years, when it was free and reduced for everybody regardless of need, do you have a sense that that was almost a hundred percent utilized by a hundred percent of the kids? Or was, you know, were there a lot of children who still brought their own food? I think that's kind of where Ms. Frank was.
When everyone could eat.
Yeah. So...
I would have to get back to you with those numbers to be...
Because my, my question is just was, if we had food for a hundred percent of the kids, but say, only sixty percent utilized it, did we waste forty percent of the food? Or was it...
I can tell you, we did not waste forty percent of the food.
I'm making those numbers up completely.
Yeah. We have a very good handle, the staff that we have has a very good handle on judging who, how many folks are going to eat based on the numbers that they had prior, you know, the day prior.
Before, okay.
But I will have to get back to you with an accurate number of how many actually participated.
So, staff were able to sort of fluctuate what they ordered based on what the trend?
Yes. And to regulate what they prepared.
Every day, no matter what?
No.
Ms. Young?
I just have two questions. I didn't get the name of all five of the schools. What were they?
It's James Blair, Laurel Lane, Matthew Whaley, James River...
Norge?
Norge.
And Norge.
Not Berkeley Middle?
No, not Berkeley. No. James Blair is the middle school.
Okay. And then my, my other question was about the difference in costs for the high school between three forty and four fifteen?
The difference is that the three, the, the three forty prices for the, the regular meal or the traditional meal, and then the four, four fifteen prices for the salad bar meal and for some of our premium meals, like a wing meal, or we have a whole muscle chicken sandwich meal, some of the meals like that that cost a little bit more, and they're more of a, a blue plate special type meal, and they're at the higher cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you. I appreciate your time explaining this. I just wanted to really understand what was happening at the system, like cafeteria level, whether, you know, like Ms. Ortega was saying, how many kids were taking advantage. But another issue that we hear about relative to the cost of school lunches, and we are, you know, being asked to consider an increase, and so, this will impact families' budgets next year, particularly, you know, in a time when there's pretty significant inflation. So, and one thing we get a lot of emails about and questions about are those unpaid balances. So, when families are not able to pay, could you just, for the public's benefit, help everyone understand what happens in that instance? And philanthropic dollars used to make up that, and that children are not denied food, and there's no shaming of any kind, and yeah, okay.
Students are not denied food when they do not have money to pay. And we do have a very generous community, and we have folks that have donated money to help cover the students that, the lunch debt for students that have not had money to pay. So, over the, before COVID, when we had a little bit of lunch debt, we have not ended any year where we've had a debt balance because we've had, we've even had a couple of businesses that have run different programs where they've collected money and donated it to cover the debt. So, we've not had any debt that's been outstanding.
And children are not...
They're not penalized in any way. They're not asked to perform any type of work or task, or we don't put any, you know, stamp on their forehead. We don't mark their arm. We don't put a little star on them. There's no identification that's made that says that they owe money or that they're free or reduced. Now, we do have some students that will go through and yell it out, and we can't control that, but we do not identify them in any way. And they all have numbers that they, they put in, so nobody knows what status they have.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Hummel?
So, the à la carte portion, so you've got the, the free lunches that everyone, for these five schools, but you also have à la carte options for people that may want to go above and beyond? Could you just explain how that works?
There will be à la carte portions at, at all of the schools, even the ones that are community eligible. So, that the community eligible schools, everyone is entitled to a free meal at those schools, but there will be à la carte items that they can purchase. So, that will, you know, if they have funds and they want to purchase those, and that will happen at those community eligible schools. Because even at Matthew Whaley and James River, which have been community eligible, they still will purchase à la carte items. And they're just, we kind of call it a cash and carry. There are those items, and if they have money and they want to buy the extra items, they can do so.
So, then that's the old, you know, they have their account, their lunch account, and it gets to, or there's no cash exchanged, right? I mean, it goes into an account, right?
Most of them have money in their account. We do still take cash if some of them prefer to bring that in. We do still take that. But most of them have money in their account.
Okay. And then for the students at, like, say, Berkeley, they would, if they qualified for free and reduced lunch, then they're just basically typing in their account number, and then the, the person knows that the food in front of them is covered, and it doesn't come out, it's not charged to any kind of account that they have to later pay?
Right. The cashier really doesn't know because you key in your number, and it, nothing, the only thing that comes up on the screen is just your name. You key in your number, and it doesn't, you know, nothing comes up that says free, or there's no F, and there's no R or anything. It just says whether you owe money or you don't, and you keep on going.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Haley and Mr. Snipes, for offering all this insight and answering our questions this evening. Thank you so much. Thank you for all your work, too. All right. We'll move on to item six five, review award contract for RFP two zero two two one zero eight four.
Just checking who's coming in.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're bringing to you an RFP for consideration for an adaptive online mathematics program, and Ms. Ford is going to present it this evening. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This afternoon, I present the review of the award of contract for the adaptive online mathematics program for grades K through five students to IXL. WJCC conducted a request for proposals to identify a tier-one computer adaptive mathematics program that will supplement classroom instruction for all K-five students, including multilingual learners, gifted students, and special education students by providing personalized learning experiences in which each student practices skills aligned to Virginia's mathematics standards of learning, WJCC course plans, and his developmental needs using research-based explicit systematic instruction presented in engaging, high-interest formats. The program demonstrates the capacity to reinforce essential mathematics vocabulary and engage students with problem solving that requires critical thinking. The I, excuse me, IXL will provide assessment of the student's mastery of skills, allowing staff to monitor student progress and disaggregate data to describe student growth and identify opportunities for instruction at the classroom, school, and division levels. And IXL provides communication tools and resources to support learning extended to the students' homes. The RFP committee members represented the curriculum and instruction, special education, and instructional technology teams, and included an elementary mathematics specialist. The proposals were evaluated using the following criteria: vendor qualifications, demonstrated understanding of the statement of needs and ability to meet the RFP requirements, functionality of the software, a work plan that demonstrates the firm's ability to provide supporting professional development, and cost. The cost of IXL for three thousand four hundred seventy-five elementary students for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year will be twenty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars. The projected cost of this contract will exceed one hundred thousand dollars over a six-year period. At this time, I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any. Surely, there are. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Can you just help me understand on the language arts side of the house, like, what would be the comparable or companion?
The English Language Arts?
Yeah.
For our elementary students in grades K through five, we have the program Amplify.
Right.
Which is a tier-one tool. Again, computer adaptive, based to personalize the learning experience that our students have during independent workstations using that tool around the skills that they need on a progression of skills. And it provides, like IXL, it provides a teacher dashboard that allows teachers to monitor individual students' progress with those skills and to understand where instructional opportunities may exist.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I noticed in here, it talks about professional development. We, we know that a lot of our teachers are feeling a lot of stress about the amount of professional developments. So, what are the, I mean, are there any specific requirements?
They typically offer a suite of opportunities, everything from a train-the-trainer model where they would train our mathematics coordinator and our math specialists in our buildings so that they can then support the teachers to use the dashboard and the tool to help students, to a suite of online asynchronous opportunities where if teachers have additional questions or want more information, they can listen to podcasts or view webinars. So, things that are more self-selected by the teachers, and they can choose to use at the time and place that's best for them.
So, let me make sure I understand. So, it would be more self-selection according to need by the teacher?
Preparing key staff members in the school division to support the use of the program purposefully in our classrooms, and then allowing, providing a suite of opportunities for the classroom teachers to self-select from.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hummel?
So, if you could take me through the selection process, just real quickly. So, the K through five math teachers, the curriculum, whatever, they, they come up, and they're like, we really want this new, this new program. It's really going to help. And there might be four or five other existing programs that we're paying for. Is it just an add-on to something else? Or is there an evaluation of our existing supporting kind of programs? And, and we're doing a, a review of what we've already got, what we're already expecting them maybe to use? Or, and then this is the, a new shiny thing that would be even better for them? Like, what is the, what's the process that you guys go through?
Absolutely. So, we were using a tool for several years under an existing contract. That contract came to a close in, in June, and so, we needed to initiate the RFP process so that we could identify the best tool at this time. Over the course of last year, Dr. Rotenger, our elementary mathematics coordinator, solicited feedback from our classroom teachers and our math specialists in the elementary schools to get their opinion on how well the tool that we were using at the time was working for them and for their students. And there was an overwhelming agreement that considering other tools that might be more aligned to Virginia's standards of learning, allow for more flexibility with assigning specific practice modules to students, and perhaps a more powerful dashboard for students may exist. So, that was more evidence that we should proceed with an RFP process. And so, after proceeding through the RFP and looking at and considering the proposals, we, the committee, using the criteria, narrowed our selection down to the top two based on the evaluation criteria. And then we brought in teams of teachers, special education teachers, English language teachers, mathematics specialists to view presentations by the vendors of the top two products through the proposal process. And so, after each demonstration, they were provided with a rubric at which they evaluated the product as it was demonstrated for them, and IXL was the product of choice by far.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good question. Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any others? Ms. Ortega?
Just a small question. IXL is what we were using before, right?
That is not the program we were using in elementary school. We were using a program called Dreambox, but IXL is used in a number of other grades.
Yeah, okay, that's, okay.
Middle school and secondary. And high school.
Right.
Twenty-seven thousand eight hundred for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year?
Yes, sir.
If adopted? And we know that it's anticipated to be over a hundred thousand for the six years. Do we, can we pinpoint what that number is? Or do we think that it's, it'll escalate as, based on future costs and demand? Yeah, yeah.
The quote is good. Under the, under the contract language, the quote is good for one year. We have the opportunity to actually extend our contract annually for up to nineteen additional years. I, you know, with the change, change of technology, I would envision that we will go through another review process to make sure that we are still using the tool that is best for our students and our staff.
Excellent.
If I could, if I could add to that, generally, we have, you know, a maximum five-year contracts, but because of the ever-changing technology and the number of items that are put through the RFP process purchasing, the county has advised us that we don't have to renew a contract every five years. It can extend longer if the product is still what we want and what we need. So, even though we likely would go out and look again, we do have the option to keep renewing for longer than five years.
And on, yeah. Ms. Ortega, go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, is this, is the price comparable to Dreambox?
It's considerably less.
Typically less, okay.
Yeah. I mentioned technology and ever-changing technology landscape. You also said something earlier that it offers communication resources. I'm curious if you can help me understand what that looks like in IXL for elementary school students?
So, it gives teachers an array of communication tools that they can use with their families, letters that they can print to explain the program reports that they can provide to families for individual students so that they can describe student progress and where they are. So, it's a communication tool, and then children can use the program on their devices at home as well.
And for the children, are they able to use it like a Skype or more or less a written communication? How does that look like?
With the device? They, most children in an elementary classroom will have earbuds and using their device, and so, it's just, it's computer adaptive. In some elements of the program, it looks very much like a game, and others, it looks more like computerized practice. So, it depends as they work through the program and demonstrate success, then they get to a gaming component.
See. Okay. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other last questions for Ms. Ford? Thank you so much for the presentation, bringing this to us.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to, I'm going to hand item six... All right, so we're gonna, I'm gonna hand item six, six, over to Ms. Hummel. This is our review of the memorandum of understanding between ourselves and our W J C C Schools Foundation. And Ms. Hummel sits on their board. Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Thank you. This is simply a renewal of a, a contract between the school system and the Williamsburg, the W J C C Schools Foundation. The only change is the date. So I would just like to spend a couple minutes talking about how much publicly we value having the W J C C Schools Foundation in Williamsburg. They have raised thousands and thousands of dollars that go towards the, the grants for innovative learning. And then recently, this past year, they also supported our Teacher of the Year program to really give some wonderful cash gifts for, for the first time ever, and it was just such a wonderful experience to have a foundation like W J C C Foundation within our school system. It was really nice. We had our board clerk asked us if we wanted to go to a special V S B A training session on setting up an education foundation for our schools. And I'm like, no, we do not need to go to that because we have a wonderful one already in existence. So I just wanted to thank the W J C C Foundation for its existence and for, basically, they've been fundraising for us since September fifteenth, two thousand fifteen, and I would like to heartily endorse that we continue this relationship. And if anyone else would like to say something, that would be great.
I just want to say, bring back the bus. Let's load the bus up and do that tour again. That's a lot of fun. This review of the memorandum, I guess there was an agreement that we and the foundation will review it every three years, and I think the last time this was reviewed is in twenty nineteen.
Right.
So just to point that out as well.
So it's changing the date from May twenty nineteen, I guess the seventh day of May twenty nineteen, to?
Sixteenth of August.
To the sixteenth of August.
Very much appreciate their work and, and yours as well, Ms. Hummel, on the board. Can't do it without the community participation. So thank you so much. We'll move on to item seven, one, student achievement, academic achievement, to be specific. Dr. Herr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, we're pleased to present some very preliminary results from our S O L results last year. This evening, you'll be presented by Mr. Walker and Dr. Worley. Just raw data, it's not accountability results, it, it's not accreditation, it's raw data of achievement that we have received already. And when we get more information, we'll be back to present more information to you. But we thought the board was keen to have an update on progress, and we wanted to bring you this information this evening. Please recall that we had a very challenging year last year again, and things weren't normal really until March of last year. We struggled keeping teachers in the classroom and, and students were back in school and learning, but it was quite a, a challenging year. And I can honestly say I'm very proud of the work that's been done by our teachers and the outcomes that we have so far. And I believe Mr. Walker is going to set us off this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Herr. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Herr. Today's presentation will include a high-level division overview of the Spring twenty-two preliminary S O L results and the Spring PALS data. This graph shows preliminary S O L raw data for the spring of two thousand nineteen in dark blue, spring of twenty-one in gray, and the spring of twenty-two in light blue. You will notice a thin red line marking the seventy-five percent benchmark for English reading and writing established by the state, which is the minimum benchmark target for all schools, and we've exceeded that state benchmark in reading. The next red line on the right shows the minimum expectation of seventy percent pass rate for history, math, and science, and we have met or exceeded that seventy percent state benchmark. Let's now look together on the very far left at English reading performance. The overall division pass rate for all students was eighty-one percent back in two thousand nineteen, which is pre-pandemic. Then in the spring of twenty-one, student performance dipped to an overall pass rate of seventy-three percent. And you can see that the Spring twenty-two overall pass rate in light blue for English reading bounced back to seventy-seven percent, showing positive gains. Moving across the graph, you can see that the history social sciences score bounced back fifteen percent. Math increased thirteen percent, and science increased by six percent. The overall scores are not back to pre-pandemic levels, but we're extremely proud of our students' S O L performance and the dedicated work of W J C C teachers, support staff, building leaders, all in partnership with families. In summary, four of the five tested subject areas show a positive trend upward from the pandemic scores in the spring of twenty-one. The writing results do show a dip in performance. Students in grade eight and grade ten typically take the S O L writing test each year in early March. However, the Spring twenty-one data of eighty-one percent in writing reflects only grade-ten students, because the state permitted much flexibility during the Spring of twenty-one for school divisions due to COVID and the daily operational and health challenges faced by all schools. Regardless, we do realize the importance of all students writing across the curriculum at all grade levels, and therefore, writing will be an area of focus for this coming school year. This slide is not S O L data. It shows five years of Spring PALS proficiency data for students in grades K through three combined. For example, on the very far left, you can see that back in two thousand seventeen, eighty-one percent, or roughly nineteen hundred students in grades K one, two, and three, met the expected Spring PALS benchmark proficiency level. Tracking across the graph, you see data for two thousand eighteen, for two thousand nineteen, and then Spring twenty-twenty data is missing because all Virginia schools closed on March thirteenth. On the far right, the Spring twenty-two data shows significant student growth in comparison to Spring twenty-one, with seventy-seven percent of our grades K through three students combined meeting the expected Spring PALS proficiency benchmark, returning closer to the previous year's proficiency levels. That's thirteen percent growth in one year for our early students. This graph shows elementary schools' preliminary S O L raw data for the Spring of two thousand nineteen, Spring of twenty-one, and the Spring of twenty-two. Again, let's look on the very far left at English reading performance. The division pass rate for all elementary students was seventy-eight percent back in two thousand nineteen, pre-pandemic. Then in the Spring of twenty-one, the all-student performance dipped to an overall pass rate of sixty-nine percent. And next to it, in light blue, the Spring twenty-two overall pass rate and bounced back to seventy-four percent, showing positive gains. Moving across the graph, you can see that math increased nine percentage points, science increased by four percentage points. The Spring twenty-one history results are not reported due to the V D O E-approved use of local history assessments in an effort to reduce testing for students, and again, the impact of COVID-nineteen on schools. That's why the graph shows zero percent for that particular subject. But we can see a seventy-four percent pass rate for social studies for the Spring of twenty-two, which is seven percent below the pre-pandemic score of eighty-one percent. In summary, we see positive gains in all four tested subjects, and realize again, the overall scores are not back to pre-pandemic levels. And again, we're extremely proud of our students' performance and the tremendous work of staff and school leaders in partnership, again, with families in one school year. Thank you.
Good evening. The next graph shows middle schools' preliminary S O L raw data, which includes initial test takers and some of our retakers for the Spring of two thousand and nineteen, Spring of twenty-one, and the Spring of twenty-two. To clarify, our middle school preliminary data does not capture credit for growth or other final adjustments such as transfer students. Let's look on the far left at English reading performance. The division pass rate for all middle school students was eighty percent in two thousand and nineteen, which was pre-pandemic. Then in the Spring of twenty-one, during the pandemic, student performance slightly decreased to seventy-eight percent. And you can see that the Spring twenty-two overall pass rate in light blue for English reading remains stable at seventy-eight percent. Moving across the graph, you can see that since the math, that since the math increased eleven percent and science increased by five percent, Spring twenty-one history and writing results are not reported due to the V D O E-approved use of local alternative assessments in an effort to reduce testing for students and the impact of COVID-nineteen on schools. That is why the graph shows zero percent, but we can see a seventy-nine percent pass rate for social studies for the Spring of twenty-two, and it is a seven percent below the pre-pandemic score of eighty-six percent. In summary, we see positive gains in two tested subjects for middle school, math and science. One area, reading, remained the same. And finally, in comparison to pre-pandemic scores, writing and social studies pass rates decreased. However, we must remember that these are the two areas we did not test last year, and overall, we are proud of our students' progress and the extended effort of our staff and leaders to support the growth and achievement of every student. The next slide, the graph shows high schools' preliminary, preliminary S O L raw data, which again, is our initial test and summary takers for the Spring of twenty nineteen, Spring of twenty-one, and the Spring of twenty-two. Let's look at the far left at English reading performance. The division pass rate for all high school students was eighty percent in two thousand nineteen, which was pre-pandemic. Then in the Spring of twenty-one, during the pandemic, student performance slightly decreased to seventy-eight percent. And you can see that the Spring twenty-two overall pass rate in light blue for English reading increased to eighty-eight percent, showing significant recovery of learning loss and exceeded pre-pandemic scores. Moving across the graph, you can see that the math increased fifteen percent and science increased by nine. We saw a decrease in history and writing scores compared to pre-pandemic results in the Spring of twenty-two. Overall pass rates at sixty-one percent for social studies and seventy percent for writing. I would like to emphasize that this is raw data. It does not account for all of our high school retakes, summer school achievement, or the calculation of alternative assessments such as work keys, all of which will only have a positive impact on the overall pass rate. Another important factor to remember is the change in diploma requirements at the state level now that only require students to earn one verified credit in social studies and one verified credit in science, and one verified credit in math to meet graduation requirements. Therefore, we will see a significant drop in the total number of high school students taking S O L tests in these subject areas. In summary, our two thousand twenty-two high school data shows positive gains from the Spring of twenty-one to the Spring of twenty-two in four of the five tested subjects, with writing being the one content area with eleven percent decrease when comparing to the Spring of twenty-one to the Spring of twenty-two. Although we have some work to do, again, we are proud of our progress, and we are confident our students will continue to excel. Additionally, our staff is committed to work and will go above and beyond to encourage every child and facilitate success for all of our students.
The previous slides showed the raw preliminary S O L data based on initial student performance and eligible retakes. We did not include student growth or other factors which will impact final adjusted data when released by the state. You will recall that per the General Assembly and the Virginia Board of Education's revised accreditation system, the state now recognizes student growth on the grades three through eight S O L reading and S O L math tests. Grades three through eight students this coming school year will take an S O L growth assessment in September, again, in mid-year, and then the final Spring S O L test in Spring of twenty-three. This slide shows that seventy-five percent, or three thousand two hundred and thirty-eight students in elementary school and middle school, grades three through eight, passed the S O L reading test, paired with nine percent in green, or just under four hundred students, showing growth from the fall twenty-one state growth assessment to the results on the Spring twenty-two S O L test. Therefore, when all S O L data is verified, adjusted, and released by the state later this month, the final pass rates will increase at each of the elementary and middle schools. And last, we can see on the graph that sixteen percent or under seven hundred elementary and middle school students did not pass or meet the growth target defined by the state. This last slide shows the impact of student growth over time in grades three through eight for math. Seventy-one percent, or a little over three thousand students in elementary and middle schools, grades three through eight, passed the S O L math test, paired with in green, fourteen percent, or just under six hundred students, showing growth from the fall twenty-one state growth assessment to their Spring twenty-two S O L test result. Therefore, again, when all S O L data is verified, adjusted, and released by the state in August, mid-August, the final pass rates for math will increase at each of the elementary and middle schools. And last, we can see that fifteen percent of our elementary and middle school students did not pass the S O L math test or meet the growth target defined by the state.
Looking forward to the school year twenty-two, twenty-three, which we've been setting the tone this week with our leaders, with our goals. We will continue building on our momentum from this past year. Individual school data, data will actually drive the development of school improvement plans and frame our work and interventions across academic content areas. All schools will set high academic and behavior expectations across the board, and will focus on high-quality teaching and learning in a positive, student-centered environment where students feel safe, valued, and cared for. In closing, our goal for this evening was to share the raw preliminary S O L Spring twenty-two data and PALS spring data to give you an awareness of student achievement and to know that W J C C schools are bouncing back. Mr. Chair, this concludes our presentation for the evening, and we are ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Dr. Worley and Mr. Walker. Any questions from the board? I think I saw Ms. Ford go.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Just wanting to clarify, in the pie charts with the colors, so the green, the green pie piece is technically students who failed but, but showed growth?
Yes, according to the state's accreditation system, they now recognize growth from that fall state growth assessment to the result on the Spring S O L test. And if they meet a certain target, then its count as passing for that. But we wanted to show the separation of the blue passed it outright, the green did not, but showed growth.
So for accreditation purposes, it counts?
Correct.
But technically, they failed.
Correct. And basically, that we've never had growth in our accountability system, and so this will impact our accountability ratings in a positive way. And it also gives credit for a, a student who comes into a classroom, a teacher who starts behind. It gives credit for the teacher that's brought that student from this point to this point, rather than just having to hit this artificial target. So it actually shows that a student has grown during the course of the year through the, the dedication and teach, and teaching of the teacher.
Okay. And then, if, if I may, just a general question, and it could be that my fellow board members already know this, but how did, so we, you know, we're, we're starting looking at the eighteen, nineteen school year, how did our pre-pandemic pass rates compare statewide?
I could get that information for you if you'd like and compare that against W J C C.
I'm just curious if we, and if we have, you know, tacitly or explicitly our own standards that exceed the state minimum requirements that we try to, to hit.
Yeah, generally, when we present the, the final data, which will, will happen usually a little bit later when we have all of the information from the state, we do compare ourselves to the state in that presentation for the board. And this is really, we don't usually do this in a preliminary way, but we know that the community and, and the board have been asking, how did we do and where are we? So this is just very preliminary, but we- But we do, we will compare to state and, and those, and those graphs over a three-year trend.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thanks for that. Thanks for giving us the preliminary data as it's, just the more, the better that we can see what's going on. It gives us clues as to where we need to focus our efforts. So just, I guess I'm going to ask your opinion about why writing, like, why?
You want me to?
Why?
Why, it's, why it's something we're working on?
I mean, well, that's obvious. Why is it across the board, elementary, middle, high, such a, a low number compared to all of the others?
Okay, I, I can speak to you. We've had a lot of changes in, in number one, in, in testing, and that doesn't mean that we're not, we shouldn't be writing in schools, but I will say that writing is, is a work of all of us, and that's what we're seeing. So that's why our focus this year is going to be really having us write, have kids write daily across all content areas and every area versus, you know, I'm, I'm in the math classroom focusing on the math. Well, I can write in math. I can write in science. I can write in social studies. And we did have a year of not having data to go on. Our teachers were used to having pre-assessment data from elementary school to use it to, to outline plans and goals for individuals in middle school, and we don't have that anymore. So we, we're learning how to assess and, and find out exactly where our students are and to help them with writing. I don't have direct correlations to that, but those are some of the things that we know are a factor and we're working on.
I don't think we're alone in that. I think there's been a dip in writing in other divisions as well, from my understanding. So I'm not sure just why it's all hit now, but, but we're certainly focusing right in on it. So we're definitely not alone, and I think we'll find comparison to state. We still may be very much still above state.
And then there's one, there's one raw statistic or whatever that like really stood out to me, and it's the one where we, okay, it was on slide three where in two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-one, our pass rate during, I would think, one of the, the worst years actually improved for English writing. So is that just a weird data thing that that would happen? It's English writing, division SOL preliminary performance where, you know, I'm, I'm used to seeing all the gray bars, the, the twenty, 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 twenty-one pass rates being below the solid blue ones. And then this one is like better than the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Are you on the division overall?
I'm on the division. It's slide, I think it's slide three of ten, maybe?
Two.
Slide two is division and then slide.
Oh, slide two, slide two.
Okay. So looking at, at that, and it's, which we are, can you say your question one more time? I'm sorry.
The high scoring, like gray.
High-scoring English writing. Do you see where I'm talking about?
Eighty to eighty-one?
I can answer that.
Yeah, because.
Typically, we have, it's grade eight and grade ten students who are taking that SOL writing test in early March. That particular year, it was just grade ten students, which by the way, is a required credit.
For graduation.
For graduation.
So there was some focus on that.
Well, that, well, that was the year where, well, and the total number that's factored in, we, is usually middle school numbers are there as well. But that was the year that we had flexibility because of the pandemic. Eighth graders didn't test. So the total number of testers is small there, and that is a requirement for graduation.
So students will be very motivated to perform.
You will.
And that, and that's the factor.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, with that, thank you, thank you for explaining.
Especially at that age. Yes.
Absolutely.
And then when we look back at the pie charts and the impact of the growth on pass rates, can you just let me know whether, is everyone taking, the ESL students, the SED students, is everyone taking these SOLs? And so.
So I, I can speak to that, Ms. Hummel. For example, I do recall this data set from the spring of twenty-one. We only had eighty-three percent of our students testing onsite for the SOL test. And we're expected to have annually at least a ninety-five percent participation rate with SOL testing, and we always achieve that. There are other alternative assessments for certain students who meet qualifications per their IEP. For instance, the VAP would, for certain students who qualify for that.
So, so are you saying some of the, the failure was just like they physically weren't here to take the test? They just didn't take the test?
In spring of twenty-one, that's correct, and we had roughly over ten percent parent refusal to allow their students.
Participation rate versus failure. If they didn't take the test, they didn't fail the test.
So did that number, is that in the red block or is that not reflected at all?
Which slide are you looking at?
Um, now, I'm sorry. Seven.
So the pie graph that, if you're looking at that, is for spring of twenty-two, our most recent data. And that's elementary and middle school students combined, grades three through eight. And that just shows seventy-five percent, the initial test passed, boom, right out of the gate.
And that's for every single student?
Every single student.
Every single student.
That took the test.
That took the test, yes, ma'am.
That took the test.
Ms. Young?
Yes, is, is that our policy that parents can opt out of the SOLs?
During the spring of twenty-one, there was much flexibility afforded by the Virginia Department of Education.
I understand that, but now? I mean.
We have minimal students who do not participate in testing.
Okay, I mean, I think that's, that's my question, but it's not typical for a large group of parents to opt their students out of testing, right?
No, it's not typical.
It's not typical.
I think the pandemic, pandemic changed a lot of things, and there was a lot of flexibility in the system over the last two years.
Okay, and then my other question is about the PALS performance. I think that's slide three. Can you, first of all, can you just tell us what that acronym means?
The Phonological Awareness Literacy Screener, and that is the State Identified Early Literacy Screener across the state, and we're expected all divisions participate with that.
Okay, my, my question is, I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to being a one, two, third grade teacher here. That is not the test that, I mean, I know that when I taught, taught first through third, that at the end of each quarter, we tested the kids using, and I don't remember the, I, I'm pretty sure the reading program is similar here. What is in the curriculum for one through three? They read little books and then they're tested? The DRA test, DRA? The DRA, okay, that's fine. Is there any, I mean, maybe nobody else is interested, but I would really like to know what the, how kids have improved. I mean, we know that our kids have been put at a disadvantage because of the pandemic. But I would be interested in finding out where grades one through three stack up, maybe at the beginning of this year.
Yeah, this is one, this graph was an attempt to bring some of that information because K through three are not doing the SOL testing, and so this gives you a sense of where our, our youngest students performed on this assessment. So it gives you a sense there was eighty-one percent and eighty-three percent, eighty-one percent in normal years, pre-pandemic, went down to sixty-four and then came back up to seventy-seven over the course of last year, which was very significant from a literacy perspective.
No, I, I do understand statistically, but that's, that's, that's a nice increase. But I would be interested, and I don't know if, I would be interested in. I didn't turn it off. I apologize.
It's okay.
But I would be interested if we could just have a little deeper insight. I know Dr. Beers would appreciate that also, just because I'm very concerned we're going to have kids that are at the end of grade three. They're, they're the kids that went through the pandemic for their first two years. And I'd like to know how successful they're going to be at the end of third grade because I want them to be ready for fourth grade, and we know once they hit fourth grade, they start going into more academic subjects. But as a, as a professional, I would, I'm very concerned about that group, those, those kids that are hit fourth grade.
That's a good point you raised. Ms. Cook?
Thank you. So I really appreciate the PALS performance slide because it not only has the percentage, but the number of takers. And I'd like to see that on all the slides, and not only would I like to see the number of takers, to your point, Dr. Worley, some of the numbers are going, you know, down as the requirements at high school. You know, so one year it might have been, you know, three thousand takers, and then the next year might be a thousand takers, right? So getting a sense of that trend. And then in some cases, where appropriate, it would be nice to know like almost the rate. So like getting at the conversation of how many people actually took it because maybe in twenty-one, they opted out. So, you know, we had three thousand kids who were eligible to take it, only two thousand took it, and of those, two thousand, eighty-two passed. So, you know, because that just helps us understand sort of the penetration of the situation. So if we could get that data embedded in these bars, that would be, I think, very helpful. Thank you. Does that, you're Dr. here, and you're giving me very funny looks.
I'm absorbing.
Okay, but yeah, it just, because you don't, to Doc, to Ms. Hummel's point, you don't get a sense of scale from the percentage. It's one number, but being able to triangulate with other numbers is much more helpful.
We were dealing with very raw numbers, and, and this spring, we will absolutely, we typically put the numbers for all the, the test takers. And we are going to have to dive into the changes, as you mentioned, because, you know, typically where for math is one example that I can share, typically in the past, every student that took Algebra I, Algebra II, and geometry in a high school would sit for the SOL test. And now the requirement is one verified credit or one pass. So once a student passed, they don't sit for any additional SOL tests. So we're going to have to communicate all of that in, in the spring and, and include that in our explanation of the data.
Ms. Huntley?
Also, thank you for sharing the raw data, and I was having flashbacks. I can imagine with writing going down because we have writer's workshop, and I don't know how they would have delivered that model through the pandemic, so I can understand how the writing scores have went down. I'm excited to, to see the final once all the data comes in. The school year for twenty-two, twenty-three, I see the high academic expectations, high behavior expectation and student engagement, and I know you're meeting with administration and teachers. But I'm also hoping that there will, somebody's going to meet with the groups of students because they have to have the buy-in as well. And so that's what I'm really hoping that once we get the, well, once you all get those things set, that the student piece, I, I would love that piece so, because they are the key to making all those things work.
Absolutely, and I think our administrators will set that tone and include them in conversations from the pre-service week before kids come back and set the tone through assemblies and classroom meetings at the beginning of the school year.
Excellent, thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Young, come back to you.
I thought Ms. Ortega had a question.
Uh, no, I think I was going to comment on something Ms. Cook said, but I don't need to.
Dr. Worley, thank you for answering our questions. I just have a crazy thought that you might had. It says, you said that once a student, because of the state requirements, that once the student passes an SOL, when are SOLs administered? Aren't they administered at least?
They're at the end of the school year, in the spring.
Only, only at the end of the school year? Okay, because I, all I could think about is if I passed an algebra test in, in September, then I would never have to be accountable again. Okay, you answered.
Yes, so especially what, high school especially, they have to earn their verified credits for graduation as well as the credit for passing the course. So they're still sitting in the course until the end of the year to earn the, the credit for the course. But the number of verified credits are not, that, that number has decreased at the state level for diploma requirements.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortega?
I have a, just a curiosity that, that's come to me. With the, with the writing situation, is it, is it at all possible, and this is just truly a question, that the, the switch to all, to one-to-one devices, that that has had something to do with writing? And is there a way to, I mean, it just seems like the same exact time across all subjects. Is there, is that possible? Or how are we, you know, how do we improve the writing with young kids on, on devices versus what they were used to doing with pen, pencil and paper?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer offhand. I just know that the emphasis on writing needs to be stronger than it has been, and it will, and it will be an absolute area of focus. I'm literally writing across every subject area, writing across the curriculum. It's a proven strategy to impact scores overall to write often and to write in every area.
Well, thank you for answering all these questions and bringing this. It's really encouraging. I know it's been mentioned a few times that this is raw data at the moment, but I see it as an absolute indication that we're moving in the right direction and positive directions and that, as you, Ms. Huntley, talked about buy-in, I think our students clearly have buy-in on this side of twenty-two, twenty-three. They want to be successful. Our teachers want them to be successful. I think just as a division, we're seeing that, and we're only going to get stronger and better. Looking for that seventy-five percent mark, just kind of be like in the background next year. So really appreciate all your work and your staff and your, your teachers as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to about eleven policies. And before we do dive into this, I do want to say thank you to our policy committee, to staff that support this effort. Months back, we, we had a good discussion around what we needed to do to catch ourselves up based on our own policy, policy BFC, policy adoption, which says that the school board shall review policies at least every five years and make those needed revisions. And so we've asked, and I think we've all agreed that we take this upon ourselves, and asked our policy committee to lead the charge on this. I will ask and see if our board is amenable to this, that perhaps our policy committee do look at BFC and see if five years is reasonable, and maybe have a discussion around that and bring, bring that conversation back to us at some time. But let's head into this today, item eight point one, review revisions to policy BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Ms. Hummel, do you mind leaving this off on this one?
Sure, this is the one, if you look at the, the red line of EDD, it's basically, what did we do? We mirrored the VSBA and I don't think there's, did everyone have a chance to read through it? It was basically talking about our participation, whether or not there was a limit on our participation virtually, and we didn't really change anything. So do you have any? I, I do appreciate you thanking, thanking the policy committee for all of these multiple, multiple policies, but for the most part, they were really easy. Easy policies. There's nothing too dramatic in any of this, but do you have any questions about anything from reading through it?
As, as I looked at this policy in particular, the red lines are, are in a way embedded within the green revision portions, and so we're not really taking away or missing anything from what I've seen. There wasn't anything that seemed to be, in, in addition to what was already an expectation in that policy. Or am I wrong?
No, 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 but I have.
Yeah, Ms. Cook, go ahead.
I, I thought it was interesting. It just hadn't dawned on me before that you can participate without participating. Like, so you can be remote but not engaged in the meeting, which I thought was fascinating. But I, I like the fact that participation remotely for personal reasons, as the law allows, is the, is the way to approach this because if the law changes, then we don't have to change the policy. But that said, I, I would appreciate it if someone, I guess probably Ms. Aller, the clerk, would kind of keep us abreast of what that is. You know, is it two? Is it more than two? So that we're all just sort of aware and making sure that we're staying on the right side of the policy and sort of understanding the nuances of that because it's relative to the number of meetings that we have. So I just wanted to request that, please.
I do think we, we brought that up about the participating and not participating, and we were trying to think of a situation where we would ever do that.
Well, so I did that once. I had, well, I guess. Well, so I did that once. I had, um, well, I guess I was not feeling well, so I watched from home live. So I didn't realize now in hindsight I could have gotten credit for being there. But so I wa- I watched, but I didn't participate. But so I guess technically I was there, but I'm not.
But you weren't on video.
No, I just watched.
Any questions for our policy committee on, um, BDD? Uh, we'll move on to eight-two, revisions to policy DO, non-locally funded programs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Yuen will take this one.
Yes, this agenda item is to revise policy DO, non-locally funded programs. This policy is modeled after the V SBA policy and the proposed changes are up, are minor verbiage updates as well as additional cross-references have been added. Our attorney has reviewed as well as the policy committee and recommend approval of the policy as presented.
So very simple, um, scratch outs and and additions of wording, taking out appropriations and substituting funding. Any issues with this policy?
I just wanted to point out something. This is a really good example of, um, the type of policy where through our procedures and practices, we follow this, but maybe not as segregated or or explicitly. So we apply for and receive grants that are embedded in our budget. So some of our grants, like our federal grants, we there are but line items every year on it, but other, but like the School Health Initiative grant, for instance, that's just embedded in our budget. It's a, it's a separate cost center, separate budget at the back. But so we technically follow this, but not everything comes directly to us as a separate. So I I thought that was just a really good example of sometimes where our practices are, um, in alignment with these policies are embedded in our practices. In this case, you know, we have grants that go through the budget. Does that, that make sense?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Cook. Eight point three, revisions to policy GCPB, resignation of professional staff members.
Good evening. Uh, this policy was last revised in twenty-seventeen, the GCPB resignation of professional staff members. The revisions align with the V SBA model policy. Our attorney has reviewed the revised policy. And the policy committee has reviewed the policy and recommends approval as presented.
Any questions for Mr. Baker? Move on to GDPB resignation of support staff members. Is that you, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Uh, this, uh, the retirement of policy GDPB resignation of support staff members was last revised in twenty-seventeen. There is no corresponding V SBA policy. The content from GDP will be covered in the revised GCPB policy. Our attorney has reviewed the, uh, the revised, uh, reviewed this policy. And the policy committee has reviewed the policy and recommends, uh, the retirement of it.
Perfect. We don't need it twice. Eight point five, review revisions to policy JCQAB, tutoring for pay.
This policy was last revised in twenty-sixteen. The revision aligns with V SBA model policy. On line six is a minor edit, just making a uppercase M to a lowercase m. And the attorney has reviewed, uh, this revised, the revision and the policy committee has reviewed the policy and recommends approval as presented.
And there are no cross-references for this?
No, sir.
I really like capital M.
Discussion around that if you'd like.
That's what I mean about some of these policies. I mean, I'll take the credit, but.
I'd just like to comment that our employees take this one very seriously and I've seen them tempted by parents and begged and pleaded with and it's, I mean, I've been very, very impressed.
Eight point six, review revisions to policy IF, curriculum development and adoption. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, everyone. Two policies to review with you this evening. So thank you again for your time. The first of the two is policy IF, which focuses on curriculum development and adoption. And policy IF was last revised in two thousand nineteen. Our current policy is not only aligned with the V SBA model policy, but in fact, it exceeds it. So the only subsequent changes that we've made to this revised policy include in line nine, we updated the name of the division for consistency. And then since our policy exceeds the standard of the V SBA model policy, the decision was made to transfer our policy guidelines, which again are not included in the V SBA model policy, and transfer those to make a regulation or to form a new regulation.
And I thank you for providing that regulation for our review. Any questions here for Ms. Knight? Yes, Ms. Um, Ortega.
Yeah, I just had a question that, um, the both the the red line portion and now the new regulation reference, the curriculum review procedure will be implemented as curriculum is modified, deleted and added. I just wondered if if that procedure is part, part of, like, how, where that is spelled out, is that part of the regulation or who's involved in that? Where where can I find that procedure?
So that procedure that's articulated here has become the new regulation as outlined.
The regulation?
It's a new regulation that we proposed. It was originally a part of the policy, as you noted here. So everything outlined from, I think, sixteen through thirty-two was now lifted and.
I see that, but both in what was lifted and what is now the new regulation, the last line of the regulation says the curriculum review procedure, which is not the regulation. Where can I find that?
We have access to that document in our office and I'm happy to share it.
Are you asking to see IFR? Is that what you're asking?
No. She, I think her clarification results and she wants to see the actual process that we're using.
What is the procedure? You know, where's that, is that outlined and and what's involved in that? I'm just.
We have a procedure and I'm happy to share. It, is that procedure something that anyone in the general public can can view? I am not sure.
I think the general public has access to to regulations. I'm not sure that the actual procedure is public, Dr. Worley. Do you know?
That's why I'm asking, because it could be that it's in our board docs and I just, maybe I can look it up myself. I just didn't, didn't know. And it was referenced as a separate thing, so I'm just curious where I can find that.
We can certainly follow up with on that with the whole board, um, provide it for you and where it's, where you can find it.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't, isn't this outlined for us every time the program of studies comes up? Like that process or am I, am I completely on a different page? No, ma'am, it's not the same process that's involved in developing the program of studies. Okay, that's, okay, thank you. Sorry. Any other questions?
Ms. Ortega, you got your question answered?
Well, I think they're going to answer my question.
Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to eight-seven, review retirement of policy IKFB, graduation exercises.
Yes, and thank you. And, um, as Mr. Dowell mentioned, our second policy this evening from CNI focuses on policy IKFB. Again, graduation exercises. This proposed policy is actually being, uh, shared with the board in consideration for retiring the policy. And the reason for that or the rationale is that there is currently no model V SBA policy for this. In researching the policy further, none of our neighboring districts have a similar policy. And the two key components that are contained therein, which include what's necessary in order for students to participate in a graduation ceremony or a graduation exercises and the certificating of those students who don't meet diploma requirements. Both of those are spelled out verbatim in our student handbook on page five. And then we also have similar language that focuses on graduation requirements that can be referenced in policy IKF. So because it felt redundant to our policy committee, it was proposed that we retire the policy.
All right, I'm not hearing any questions there. It makes sense. Move on to eight point eight, review revisions to policy IGAG. Thank you, Ms. Knight. Teaching about drugs, alcohol and tobacco.
I believe Ms. Ford is joining us again for this one.
Good afternoon. Again, Mr. Chair, members of the school board and Dr. Heron. This afternoon I present four policies and their revisions for your consideration. The first policy I will review is IGAG, teaching about drugs, alcohol and tobacco. This policy was last reviewed and revised more than five years ago. In April two thousand twenty-two, House Bill eleven oh eight was approved, which amended the Code of Virginia to include the requirement for instruction on gambling and its addictive potential. As a result of the amended code, the V SBA policy was revised in May two thousand twenty-two. We recommend replacing the IGAG language with the updated V SBA language. We have also recommended adding the cross-references. GBECA slash G, excuse me, JC, JGC and JFCF, alcohol and drugs.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Any questions or comments here? I just had one and to be honest, I I did vibrate a little bit when I see underage marijuana use. And for me, uh, as a board member, I don't think that I want to advocate for any type of marijuana use. And I know that this gets us kind of in line with what's happened in our state and state legislation. But we could also be more stringent in our policy. And so perhaps from my thinking, we leave it at drug abuse rather rather than underage marijuana use. Just curious what the board's thoughts were on that.
So you're recommending changing underage, taking the word marijuana out and replacing it with drug?
I think it's worked for a long time, drug abuse. It's there, right. It's there, drugs and drug abuse. But then we delineate, you know, what types are perhaps permissible for underage use or not.
I mean, I guess that would raise the question, like, what's the difference between alcohol abuse and underage drinking? That would be the same difference, right?
That's right.
Well, I mean, there is a difference. I mean, and I think to your point, Mr. Dowell, marijuana is becoming decriminalized and legalized across the country, so parsing those out, the same way that below them, tobacco and nicotine are. Since it's consistent with what's recommended, I would say let's, let's keep it. I mean, they're all, they're all drugs, nicotine, alcohol.
I mean, for for me, uh, I'm not, I mean, if you're an adult, once you make those decisions, that's a person's choice. We're, we're concerned with our students. And that's, so that's why I think that leaving the underage is a good thing because we're talking about students. We're not talking about the general populace. I mean, that's, that was my take on it.
Perhaps this instruction goes farther than just talking about drug abuse in general, which would pertain to any age. Maybe this, this actually outlines the, the particular dangers of underage. First, you know what I mean? Maybe it's actually.
I see where you're going.
Maybe it's actually what you, better.
Because this is teaching about. It's the teaching.
Right, and maybe it's, maybe there's specific, you know, even worse consequences for the underage use versus an adult use. I don't know, but I'm saying it's possible.
Ms. Huntley, do you have a thought?
No, sir.
Not on this? Okay. Well, that's my thought on the matter. Um, I just wanted to share that with the board, uh, what I was thinking when I saw this and, uh, have given it some thought and just really unsettled, um, that we would potentially indicate that any type of marijuana use was acceptable. But, uh, that's just my thinking on this. I'm happy to move on. Eight point nine, review revisions to policy IIA instructional materials.
Yes, we are revisiting IIA. This policy was last reviewed and revised in two thousand one. We are recommending the following revisions to the policy. Lines eleven and twelve, we remove, we remove the phrase related to the review of instructional materials from that specific paragraph so that the paragraph remains focused on the content of selecting and evaluating materials. That the statement about the process to request the reconsideration of instructional materials is moved to the next paragraph as a standalone sentence. The statement about the availability of the procedures and guidelines for instructional material selection in the Office of Academic Services was deleted. The procedures for selecting instructional materials are in, are provided and identified in the regulations for IIAA and IIAB. The specific section reference to the Code of Virginia was added in line thirty. And we added a number of cross-references including IIAAR, IIAB, IIAR, excuse me, IIABR, KLB, KLBE and KLBR. Show the relationship between all of those policies and regulations.
So it's everywhere.
We put it everywhere.
Here's, there's one comma that, so when you struck out the, after students, it should be a period instead of a comma. Come on, do you see where I'm?
Yeah, yes, we can make that change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Second time around.
You would have seen it when, someone would have noticed it.
All right. Any questions for Ms. Ford on this item? Looking good? All right. Thank you, Ms. Ford. And, uh, your eight-ten?
Sir, the third policy, IIAB, supplementary material selection and adoption. Again, this policy was last reviewed in two thousand one. We make the following recommendations, that the superintendent and designee are added to those who are identified as having responsibility for the selection of supplemental materials. That the categories of videos and online resources are added to the list of types of supplemental materials and resources. That the legal reference to the code for instructional materials is added. And that the cross-references for policy KLB and the regulations for IIAB and KLBR and KLBE are also added to this policy.
Videos and online resources as supplemental materials. All right. Any comments? I don't want to skip over anybody if you got one. Pretty simple though. Okay. No, I'll hold it. I'll hold it. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ford. Eight-eleven, review revisions to policy KLB, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials.
All right, and again, uh, this policy was last reviewed in two thousand six. And at this time, we are recommending that the original language of the policy is removed and is replaced with the language from the V SBA model policy, option two, which outlines the policy, that a policy exists to request the review and reconsideration of instructional materials. The language of the original policy reads more like the procedure for the actual review and response to a citizen complaint about instructional materials. And that information and process is identified in KLBR, the regulation. We've also added again a number of cross-references to our existing policies and regulations related to instructional materials and supplemental materials.
Ms. Ortega and then Ms. Young.
So I would like to suggest that we make a, the change in the second paragraph of the green text that says, and change it to materials shall be considered for their educational suitability only, period. I think that that would.
And you're suggesting striking out what's behind that and shall not be prescribed or removed because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval?
Right. Because I don't think we need to regulate why a citizen would or would not have a complaint. I think that that's what the process is for.
I think that that's what the process is for. And I'm not saying I'm, I'm not in favor of partisan or doctrinal influences. I'm simply saying we, it's not, it's not necessary. And if we, I think it can be subjective, regardless of who brings the complaint, what a partisan or doctrinal disapproval is, and if we focus solely on educational suitability, that ought to cover it.
Ms. Young?
I mean, exactly, I agree with that. First of all, because of a person's worldview, of course, it's going to depend on how they view a material. But really, the person, when we're adopting learning resources, we're concerned only with the suitability of the material. And then my second thing would be, who's going to decide? I don't want to put a person in that position of deciding whether or not it's partisan or doctrinal. I don't think that's necessary, we just need to be dealing with the curriculum material. And then so when somebody's complaining, that's what they should be addressing.
Other thoughts on this recommendation that we put an end after suitability only, period, and we strike the remainder of that sentence only? Do we all see that?
I'm not comfortable making that change without checking first with staff, and particularly with legal, perhaps. I mean, it's in the V S B A model policy for a reason. And perhaps we should explore what that reason is before we strike it. I'm not opposed to it, because I understand what you're saying. But I would like to explore why the legal team at V S B A felt it should be in there, enough to put it in there, and what our attorneys think about it. Because, you know, Mrs. Young, there may be a system through which you determine what's partisan or doctrinal, I don't know.
And that would be interesting, I mean, and I guess the other thing is, because we have, I mean, we could have also gone with just option one, which I think doesn't even address that area of partisan or doctrinal.
What do you mean by that, Ms. Young? Maybe you can help us understand the process around this policy.
I'm not sure where I'm at.
The V S B A has two options.
It has two options, there's option one and option two. And I'm not sure why we went with option two, because I think option one says it all, I don't know, I must not have been at this meeting.
I like that despite the care taken in selecting, like, I felt like that was very nice. But I mean, so I guess my request would be to not have this go forward into the consent agenda and allow it to circle back. Because I'm not opposed to what you're saying, but I'd like to learn more about.
Well, I mean, and does the regulation, addressing your statement, does the regulation just define what partisan or doctrinal disapproval is? And I mean
Or is there another doc, you know, document out there that does?
If there is, that would be great to know, because, or it could be subjective, and someone could say, well, I'm going to take your concern, because I don't think yours is partisan, but I'm not going to entertain your concern, because I deem that to be partisan, and I think that's very subjective.
Right, and what if the educational focus is partisan or doctrinal, too? Like, what if that's part of the edu-
Ms. Hummel, can you help us understand the process around this during that committee meeting?
So I think, this is when, Mrs. Young, you had to leave early.
Yeah, and that's what I'm thinking.
And so I think that's what happened during our policy committee. And I'm totally open to having it delay this and look into it further, or, you know, actually circle back and say, option one might be better for this board, rather than option two. I'm fine for that. I think it was just a matter of, and literally, had it had some of the
Yeah, I had to go to the doctor, I'm sorry.
Yeah, she had to leave.
And I apologize.
And I'm not trying to put this on, you know, one of you, it's just, you know, in that conversation.
And so, and so for me, when Mrs. Young wasn't there, that sentence didn't resonate in a negative way with me, you know, like, it didn't pop out to me. And I think when she's, you know, when she's looking at it, and then it did pop out to her, it's worth extending this to another, you know, circling it back and re-reviewing it.
That's enough, the policy committee do take this one back. Do a little bit more research and have a bit of discussion around, perhaps also that regulation and what's required.
So just for clarity, so I can understand, as we go back to, one of the questions is around the language from the V S B A model policy, too, relative to the clause that Ms. Ordigo brought up. That you want some clarity around that, and then subsequently, our attorneys outside of the S B A's perception or thought around that clause, first of all. And then secondly, just as a reminder, in Ms. Ford's opening comments, as we talked about the current policy as it reads, we felt like that seemed to be more regulatory in nature, which is why option two was the suggestion administratively we brought forward, thereby taking the current language of the policy and creating a regulation to delineate what that process may look like. So that, just going back to why we were suggesting option two, notwithstanding the concerns from Ms. Ordigo around the clause of that language.
Thank you.
No, I get that, and I agree on face value, I agree why that first part looks more like a regulation, I agree with that.
I do.
So we will include this on the nineteenth of August, when the policy committee gets together to talk again, if we can get some additional responses.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So with that being our last policy of the evening, we're, I'd like to ask, is there any reason why we can't include eight one through eight ten on our next meeting's consent agenda? Okay, I think we're going to be clear for that. And then we'll hold off on K L B for the moment. Okay, let's move on to item nine point one, Approval of Personnel Actions, is there a motion for this item?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Ms. Cook, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item nine two, Approval of Authorization of Signatures in the Absence of the Superintendent. Is there a motion here?
I move to approve the authorization for Ms. Renee Ewing, Chief Financial Officer, Mr. Daniel Keever, Chief Operating Officer, and Mr. Sean Walker, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership, to sign State Department of Education documents in the absence of the superintendent through August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Ms. Ordigo, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley, any discussion? And Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
And Mr. Dowell?
Aye. All right, item three, Approval of Tuition Rates for Non-Resident Students for Twenty-two, Twenty-three School Year.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve tuition rates for non-resident students for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Ms. Hummel, and is there a second?
Can we say as presented, just for clarity's sake? Can, do you mind adding?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the tuition rates for non-resident students for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel and Ms. Hunley for the second. And any discussion around this item, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this doesn't have a particularly large budgetary impact, because we don't typically get a lot of non-resident students, you know, one or two per year at the most. But every year, I try to figure out why we struggle as a division to pay our teachers more than their neighboring, than the neighboring divisions, and why we struggle to have, as a result of partially the facilities we have, but also partially the resources we have. You know, we have larger class sizes than our neighbors as well. And so it just strikes me when I look at the numbers, and I just, for just clarity's sake and for the public, I just want to say, you know, we have what I would call an unfavorable local composite index, which requires our local governments to contribute more to the education of our kids compared to our neighbors. In addition to that, the state is, I think, fortieth out of fifty in its investment of public education per child. So the state's contribution's not great. We have three times the rate of homelessness in our division, and that's, that costs money that isn't reimbursed by any government. Even though our English language learner numbers are not huge compared to our neighbors around the state, certainly they're growing at a very quick pace. But we do have a significantly higher percentage of special ed students. And when I look at the delta between regular education tuition and special education tuition, it's roughly nine thousand dollars per kid. And then when I look at, you know, our three to four percentage points higher of special ed kids, that, and then you multiply that times eleven thousand kids, that essentially means that off the top, we're spending, you know, roughly three to four million dollars every year additionally to educate our kiddos, which I'm delighted to say that we do a great job doing. I think our S O L scores suggest that we could do better. In fact, we absolutely can and should do better. But I just, it's one of those things that I just want to point out, that, you know, we struggle financially, and because the state doesn't give us much money, and they expect more from our local governments, and it costs us more to educate our kids. And that's just a financial reality that I think we all need to keep in mind as we look at our budget every year. So I just, this item made me think of that, and I just wanted to share that, because I ran the numbers, and they're pretty, pretty big.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Nine point four, Approval of Revisions to Policy J N Appendix A Student Fee Schedule for School Year Twenty-two, Twenty-three.
Sir Chair, I move to approve the revisions to Appendix A of Policy J N Student Fee Schedule as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, and thank you, Ms. Hunley, for the second. The discussion or conversation here. Hearing none, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item nine five, Approval of Award of Contract for Request for Proposal two zero two two dash one zero two six. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the award of contract for request for proposal number twenty twenty-two dash one zero two six, Facilities Condition Assessment to Bureau Veritas in the amount of hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook and Ms. Young for the second. I'm glad you were the one reading, because I'm looking at it, I'm thinking millions, so you're absolutely right, thousands.
No, no.
Totally got in that wrong. Any discussion? Yes, Ms. Hummel.
I just want to say that, I think, when was the last time we had one of these done?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen, that's right, I remember, it was like at the start of my tenure here. And I just have to say, this is one documented that is worth every single penny of the one hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents. It's a living document for the next five years, and it's something that we really, really find valuable as a school board. So I look forward to seeing what the results are.
Yeah, I think it does a great job of sort of organizing our C I P and allowing us to plan ten years out. Mr. Snipes, can you remind me who the contractor was for the last one?
It's different.
It was Faithful Gold.
And so they did not bid?
They are no longer in business, but there were two vendors, two people that were on their previous organization that were part of a bid.
Okay.
I don't know, well, can't say they're no longer in business, they didn't bid, but two people that were on their previous organization did.
And are they, those people part of the successful bidder?
No, they're not.
So this is going to be a completely new team?
This is a completely new team.
So that begs the next question, do you anticipate the process being similar or different, better, comparable? Can you?
We do anticipate the process being similar, where they're going to get out into the schools and to visit the schools and visit principals and see what our schools are like. And when students are there, when they are not in this, when students are not there, they'll also be looking at long-term facility maintenance goals.
And this is just maintenance, so there's no additions, or this is just current existing facilities and their condition and their maintenance, correct?
This is not a long-term study. Mr. Keever may want to add to that. He was also part of our committee to evaluate.
Thank you.
You said you did a great job. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Item nine six, Approval of Release from Compulsory Attendance, Case Number R two 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 three dash zero one.
I move to approve the release from compulsory attendance for case number R two 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 three dash oh one.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
Second.
Ms. Hunley for the second, and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye, thank you. And we're on to board member comments. Would anyone like to go first?
Sure, I'll go first.
Okay, Ms. Hunley, thank you.
So it was exciting to be at the graduation, the second one, for the five students, and I was just excited for the five as I was for the two hundred, triple that time. Also, summer school's over, and I'd just like to thank all the teachers, because I know they worked really hard. I did go by D J Montague and just to read to a group of students, but it was nice just looking in and seeing the small numbers, because class size really does matter. And I know that they were getting, you know, individualized attention that they needed. And the school principal also says, you know, with having those low numbers, too, the discipline was really down. And so it was, she said it was a very successful year, and the kids looked like they were really engaged. And that brings me to, I know we got an award for ship, and I saw that there was a lot of ship activities that were done in summer school, which was really great, because that's hands-on. And so in the V S B A bulletin that they send us, I saw that we were in there, the children were making ice cream with yogurt, and so we were featured. So that was just exciting, that ship was so involved with a lot of the hands-on learning. And I think, oh, and foundation grants, as being a recipient, I'm so glad we have that years in a row. And I know my husband thanked them, because teachers spend a lot of money out of pocket, and it was nice to not have to spend thousands of dollars to help benefit children. So I'm very glad that we were able to renew that. That's all.
Ms. Young?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dowell. Yeah, I wanted just to welcome back our administrators, I'm sure that summer break was short. But it was really fun to watch them doing the, showing gratitude to the community. And I think it's a good idea to get your head out of the office and to be outside and have a broader look at the community. And I think being outside does that for them. And we have an amazing group of administrators. Secondly, I hope the teachers that were teaching summer school, thank you for doing that. I know many of you were burnt out during the year, but please take the next few weeks and get some rest. And again, I know Julie has been serving on that foundation committee ever since I've been a school board member. I want to thank her for doing that, and we don't always thank her for her efforts on that. And it's been fun over the years to see how that has grown. And it was really wonderful this year that they were there sponsoring the Teacher of the Year Award. So thank you, Julie.
Ms. Ordigo?
I don't have a lot of comments, just want to thank all the staff for their continued hard work through the summer. It's not really time off for you, and the school year has already begun for you. So thank you for everything that you do, and just hope all of our students and families enjoy the last few weeks of freedom. And yeah, that's all I got, thanks.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to echo everyone else's comments about the school's foundation, both Ms. Hummel, your service, but then also everyone's contributions and hard work. Not only does it make a, you know, meaningful difference in the classroom, but also, I think, to Ms. Hunley's point, it is a big morale booster for the staff. And that's, you know, we're lucky to have that in the ship program, and it makes our school division unique. And yeah, so that's a good thing. And then, Mr. Chair, I neglected during announcements to mention that on July thirteenth, we had a liaison we had a liaison committee meeting. So I apologize for that. I forgot my school board briefcase. And so I don't, but I think a couple of things that just to update our colleagues and the public is the county and the city put in their budget that started July first, a line item to work together to hire a lobbyist, to work with the General Assembly in Washington, I mean, Washington, oh my gosh, in Richmond, rather, to advocate for items of mutual interest, chief among them, of course, is school funding. So so that's a big commitment on the on the part of the city and the county to work collaboratively, co-fund, co-direct, a government relations person to go into Richmond and advocate for our needs. And I think we really owe them a debt of gratitude for that. And it's a huge positive move in the right direction. So hopefully, in January, you all will join them in the Capitol and and go talk to our legislators together. Also, we talked briefly about having a joint meeting to review the threat and vulnerability assessment. We also talked briefly about the joint contract and then also a little bit about the additional educational space targeted towards pre-K and the James City County Board of Supervisors then subsequently had the architects present to them. And so I would encourage you, if you weren't there, to watch that. And then last thing I wanted to just say is, we recently, and this is a policy committee question, I think, adopted a policy that had been worked on with through CAC for many, a couple of years, that that addressed inclusion. And so I just wanted to say that that policy is there. It would be helpful to know what that, what if anything that's done on the ground to change. And I'm not asking now, but since that was mentioned today, and we did make that move to adopt that policy, it would be good to know how that's converted into action on the ground.
Can Ms. Cook, Ms. Hummel?
Thank you. I would like to thank the speakers that came out. And I do concur with what Ms. Cook just said regarding the inclusion policy because it was something that we all discussed as a school board. And so I am, I I would like to to know where maybe the disconnect is between having an overarching inclusivity policy and then having it somehow not not being recognized by teachers and parents. So I I just am curious about about that. And then wanted to also thank our other speaker who talked about the public comment in our work session. And I do think that all of us were were, this is new this year for all of us, this changing the time of our work session, having our comments go from three minutes to a minute and a half. And I think suggestion, I think all of us are just seeing how this year is unfolding and the pros and cons. And I I I think it's something that we can always revisit after we've got some experience under our belt to see how this is all working out for us. And then, yeah, thank you for all the comments about the support of the education foundation. I really appreciate, of course, because I've been working with the foundation for so many years, I appreciate the work that it does, and I'm glad that it's recognized by the community and by this board. And then everyone else, have a great rest of the summer. Look forward to the school year and the and I'm looking forward to all the data coming our way. So thanks to administration for providing the raw data and allowing us to just poke holes at it and ask questions. That's all part of the the process here. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I'm I'm just genuinely very excited about the way this year's starting and going to start. Gratitude, it's a huge word, and it's so impactful. And it sets the stage. It just gives us, gives all of us the right perspective on who we are, what we're intending to do here, and who we're intending to serve. And that we do have so much to be grateful for, and this this opportunity to give back as well. So I'm really genuinely genuinely excited and just really looking forward to all the wonderful things that are going to come about through convocation and those discussions leading on to this next year and to continue to see the growth in our division from that, just from that right perspective. So that's all I wanted to to add to this discussion. And it's certainly something that this year I'll be keeping front and center in my mind, knowing that that's the perspective that this division has, just to be grateful for who we are and what we have and to give back. Let me move on to item eleven, one upcoming events. Policy committee meeting on August nineteenth, keeping them busy. Eight thirty AM in room one oh eight here at Central Office. Then our upcoming meetings, August sixteenth, closed session at six, followed by the regular meeting at six thirty. Closed session here in this room and then regular meeting in the gym at James Blair. And then September sixth, our closed session and work sessions, four and four thirty respectively, right back here in room three hundred. All right, and we've discussed our consent agenda for our next meeting. With that, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.